It just says, give me cross it on with a number on it. XXXX.
I need the, we need the numbers.
Okay, I just don't know why, yeah, all this, the numbers on top of that.
Yeah, what, or the, yeah.
Fire show too, that blows all the fire.
All right, got it.
We'll have a polar express.
All right, we set?
All right, we're good.
All right, 6:00 PM, we'll call this regular village board meeting to order. I'd like to begin with a moment of silence, and tonight, in honor of Joe Gragg. Joe worked in our water department from February 1998 until he retired in July of 2014. And we lost a wonderful man this last weekend, and our thoughts continue to be with Diane and the rest of the Gragg family. So if you would join me in a moment of silence for Joe and all those we lost. And a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, could you take your role, please?
Trustee Mao.
Here.
Trustee Charo. Trustee Gerger.
Here.
Trustee Detmers.
Here.
Trustee Scherzle.
Here.
Village President Kimzie.
President.
Any public announcements this evening?
None.
Other comments regarding the agenda topics? Hearing none, entertain a motion to put the consent agenda on the table. Trustee Mao has made a motion, seconded by trustee Charo. Any questions or comments regarding the minutes or the warrants?
There's another one for the Bobcat I saw.
That should be the last one.
Okay.
Can you send it back?
Okay, for, for work done, or?
No, the Bobcat, we were renting a Bobcat while our other one.
Was being worked on.
Well, we, we're trying to decide whether to try to purchase lease one to replace it. The cost to fix that one is probably not worth what it is. So we're trying to get quotes on that and see what we got.
Okay.
Madam Clerk, could you take your role?
Trustee Mao. Trustee Charo. Trustee Gerger.
Yes.
Trustee Detmers.
Yes.
Trustee Scherzle.
Yes.
No old business, under new business?
I did have one question, I'm still a yes, but it showed we have a payment to Springfield. Is that just our monthly? It said a CWP for eight hundred and some dollars.
Yeah, we, we have agreement, you know, that to be able to have our backup supply.
Yeah.
That, and then I think we pay some utility usage also for like out at our, our pump station.
Okay.
So it's probably a combination of, because I don't think it was eight hundred for the backup, but I don't remember what it.
Eight fifty-four, yeah, that's the normal way it's expressed on the warrants, yeah.
Thank you.
Still okay?
Yeah, yeah, okay.
All right, under new business, recognizing the achievements of Glenwood High School Girls Cross Country Team, the 2020 Shazam State Cross Country Division Two state champs, and also recognizing the achievements of the Glenwood Middle School Girls Cross Country Team, also 2020 Shazam State Cross Country Middle School State Champions. Could I have a motion to accept both? I'll make the issue resolutions.
I'll second.
Trustee Scherzle, seconded by trustee Detmers, all in favor? Item three is a resolution granting the Friends of the Park use of Chatham Community Park for light up the park. A motion to bring this to the floor.
I'll move.
Trustee Detmers made a motion, seconded by trustee Charo. This is the official permission for the Friends of the Park, just to get it documented, which does begin Friday, so. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Item four, an ordinance accepting the low quote for a four-by-four truck to be used by the water department. Does that motion bring this to the floor? Trustee Mao made a motion, seconded by trustee Charo. Any discussion?
So it looks as though we went for one Chevy bid and then two Fords?
Yeah, Morrow is the company that we always go through for the police cars. So we always like to give them a chance. And then the other two were local, it was Friendly Chevrolet and Landmark Ford, or not Landmark, Crossroad Ford.
What's the truck gonna be for?
It's a one-ton that the water department will use to haul dirt back and forth when they're backfilling. If they have to do excavation around it, it'll also be the vehicle that pulls the mini excavator around. And it's big enough that we can put a plow on. And we had set aside 50,000 in the budget, and we are purchasing the truck, and then we'll add a plow to it, so it'll be ready for this year. And it still is, with both of those, I think we're under the 50,000, but.
So with, with those vehicles and equipment, do we have a list of all the vehicles and equipment to know like where they're at, like when we approved the, the new police vehicles? The chief had that list of where they were all at in that life cycle and how they would need to be rotated? Do we have a list of all those vehicles? Could, could you send that to the board to know? So we have an idea of knowing how those vehicles and equipment's being staged? And I think about that.
You would see in the streets department that we have an aging, aging fleet.
Sure.
The proprietary funds can purchase trucks on a more regular basis because they, they make more money. But a lot of times, we will then take a vehicle from the water or electric then, and then hand that down to the parks and the streets too, so. But in this case, the street department has a one-ton, the electric department has a one-ton, and the water department sees how versatile it is to be able to have one of those. So that's why they were requesting one this year. But yeah, I'll get you the list.
Madam Clerk, take your role.
Trustee Mao.
Yes.
Trustee Charo. Trustee Gerger.
Yes.
Trustee Detmers.
Yes.
Trustee Scherzle.
Yes.
All right, item five is an ordinance admitting the village customer service policy handbook. I'm gonna have to ask you guys how you want to approach this, because we have two, two separate proposals on there. Do you want to have a discussion, or does somebody want to make a motion to bring one forward for consideration? Or how do we want to go about it?
I'll make a motion to bring trustee Detmers version of the policy out.
Well, and it's not a version, one will be, they'll both go in place. It would be both of them. So that's the purpose.
I'll make a motion that both be adopted.
So the, to kind of explain, and Greg can help too, because he understands that for talking to me. One is to change the policy handbook, that's Dewey's, to change it going forward. We all thought there were payment plans, there, there weren't, so this is his adding that. Mine is just to directly address the pandemic situation.
Okay, because I didn't interpret that as.
Mine is just to interpret the pandemic situation to give a different leeway, more help to people. And trustee Detmers is to change the book, so to speak.
So I thought, though, that one was just to be during the pandemic, and one was to be sick plus beyond the pandemic.
One would be, one would be during the pandemic, the other one will change the policy handbook right now, but the pand.
So the one ends after March then?
Yes.
Okay. Just now we just, after we.
If I could just clarify, both of these, the way they're drafted, both go into the hand. If, if trustee Gergers is approved, there's a COVID policy that will, that will suspend, it will go into the handbook, it will suspend any shut-offs through March 1st. And they will have additional time, instead of the three and six months of trustee Detmers' plans, they'll have 12 six-month payment plans up through, essentially up until April, or up until March 1st. You can apply for the longer payment. If you, if you don't have a balance as of March 1st, when you, at some point you fall behind after, after March 1st, then you'll, through the 2021 calendar year, you'll have the ability to still apply for a six-month or a three-month repayment plan. And if you fall behind and apply for that repayment plan, we can put you on that plan, and you will not be shut off, provided you abide by the terms of that plan. So the way I would phrase it was trustee Gerger adds an additional, adds more, an additional, additional type of repayment plan between now and March 1st. If you were to go with trustee Detmers' plan, it would be the six and three-month repayment plan beginning now and extending, still extending through December, December 31st of 2021.
This is, which is, which is where I, that's, that's where I had the question, because if you incorporate both like you're suggesting, you, you both identify the same time period with different.
Trustee Detmers, it would, this one would supersede that one until, unless you have a balance as of April 1st, or after the March 1st. So his would kick in after March 1st. So if you were delinquent after that, you, it's, it's hard to say that it's because of the pandemic. Prior to that, people are gonna be struggling, people are gonna be cut, and their jobs are gonna be cut, or they're gonna have to do other things, and it's just to provide them with a little bit of relief. And with our utility bills being so high, we just thought a longer, I, I thought a longer payment plan would help people get back on their feet for this specific instance. If you're delinquent after March 1st, we probably have some habitual delinquent people that they shouldn't get that pandemic break, so to speak, after that. They should get whatever we approve as a board, three, six months, or, or nothing, whatever, whatever it may be. I do appreciate the work that both of you put into both of these, because I think, you know, we've heard from a number of people who are, are struggling and, and, and need some relief during this time. So I, I just want to say thank you to both, because I know it's not easy to put a plan together like that.
So if I could just clarify, I guess, your interpretation of the two different plans, which is that between now and the end of 2021, my plan would be available. And again, there's stipulations with respect to the balance that you have on your account, and that dictates how long your payment plan could be in the maximum. But in the interim, between now and March 1st, you have a plan that sort of sits on top of that, that essentially, when March 1st hits, we reassess folks' balances and say, at that point, if your balance was a hundred dollars, then you would have six months to pay that a hundred dollars back. Or if your balance was three thousand dollars, then you would have 12 months to pay that back. So it sounds like my language doesn't necessarily help anything between now and March 1st, right?
But your bill would approve, that we're not shutting off. And so at March 1st, if you have a balance and you don't be able to set up a payment plan, we just have to get through this time.
So do we want to adapt my plan such that it's effective March 1 through December 31st?
Can I?
Or do you have a suggestion?
I dare make a suggestion.
Please, yeah.
Given the temperatures, it's not pressing that this has to be done tonight.
Well, we just, it was made very clear last meeting about things need to be in writing, and so I think we need to.
Given the temperature, it's not, it's not pressing that it has to be done tonight, because the, the language impact won't technically impact anybody between now and our next meeting, is what I'm saying. My suggestion is to table this, allow Greg to put what you're trying to say, both of these, into one clear ordinance that you can pass in, in a clear way that has, you know, what, what you want in, in an initial period versus what Dewey's trying to pass into a single period. So we have a single, clear ordinance that makes it easy to try.
If I may offer, I think we could do the one that would allow what the stipulation is tonight, because it's gonna be effective December 1, and it's in writing that we won't be doing shut-offs and all that. And there will be payment plans, and we could, that would still allow for time to do something that's ongoing afterwards.
Are we shutting off now?
No.
We haven't.
We haven't shut off any water since March of this year. We do have provisions in our policy manual that as the temperature hits a certain point, nobody's gonna get shut off for electric, which we've already told our utility department, given all things, even if it's close, don't shut anybody off, so nobody's gonna get shut off.
The phone calls would have gone out a week ago for shut-offs for the bills that were due this, this month. And I told the girls, I said, we're not sending out the phone notification, and we're not shutting anybody off until spring, so.
So for practicality purposes, all these things already exist, rather than try to confuse our legal system.
But it's 49 degrees right now, so if we're using the temperature, it's not too cold, so.
I would reiterate what, what I just said and what Pat was also indicating.
I'd like people to vote that, I mean, we're trying to help people here.
Not a problem, I'm trying to get you guys to where you have a clear ordinance.
Well, so we would, if we just passed the one, or talk and ultimately vote on the one tonight, and then we table Dewey's to give people help after that going forward. But I think we need to put something in writing for pandemic purposes, for the girls in the utility office, and for citizens to know.
I agree.
So the first motion that we had, trustee Mao did make a motion to bring to table trustee Detmers'.
Okay.
Is there a second?
To bring trustee Detmers? Yes, I'll second to bring that forward.
Okay. So on that, madam clerk, would you take a vote?
Mrs. Kirk, Dewey's.
Just to bring it forward, right?
Well, have a vote, I mean.
Is there any more to say?
We've had a discussion, it'd be just.
We could have, we, for trustee Detmers, we could make a motion to table.
I'd like to make a motion to table it until we can.
Let's back up.
Well, I've made a motion.
Hang on.
The law is under the table.
Hang on.
Okay.
Hang on, listen to what I'm gonna say. Trustee Mao had made a motion to bring forward trustee Detmers' ordinance for consideration and vote. Is, is there a second?
For what, I don't know if he's either.
I'm asking right now, is there a second?
Trustee Gerger.
Sure, I'll second it, I'll second, I'll second mine.
But then we don't get to table it, so.
We discuss it.
It dies.
Now we have four discussions.
He wants to vote on it.
Four discussions. Is there discussion regarding the version of the policy manual that trustee Detmers has put forward?
If we're gonna vote on all of it, first, we. But I'd rather them be combined. Two weeks isn't that long, and everybody's gonna get shut off.
Correct.
I could rescind my motion, correct?
You could.
I'll rescind my motion.
I'll make a motion to table trustee Detmers' ordinance.
A motion to table that ordinance. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We have a motion to consider the version drafted by trustee Gerger.
I'll make the motion.
Trustee Detmers made a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Now we have discussion regarding the version.
Yes, I do have a minor edit to Mr. Gergers, or trustee Gergers. If you were to look on page, page three, under section BJ2I, and I don't, Amy, if, if you could possibly pull that up, it's at the bottom of page three. It says that balances, it's just a typo, I think. Yeah, balances of 500 or more, again, BJ2I, will be split into 12 payments. But it's on row three, and on the final row, si- six, it says six months. They both just need to be changed to 12. Also, again, on the third line and the sixth line, it should say 12 months. I think we just copied the language and didn't get those changed.
Is there further discussion regarding this?
The other thing I think we should discuss is the, the late fee, I have it at 5%, but that could affect budget. So Pat, do you know how that affects the budget?
Well, I asked Sheri to run the numbers from December the 1st through the end of the fiscal year, and she estimated that in that time period in the past, we would have brought in a hundred thousand dollars in late fees, at, at, at the 10%. If you cut it to a half, you know, half that, you're looking at fiscal.
Now, are we having people, more people be late now, though?
No.
So the same?
Yeah.
Throughout the pandemic, it, the numbers have been.
Some people just don't pay on time. They wait till they get the shut-off notice or the calls, and then they pay.
Right.
We have built that into our budget because it's, it's consistent. A lot of the residents in Chadon turn around and pay late on a regular basis.
So that, that's, would be the one thing where we could make, I would be open to amending.
Our recommendation would be to leave it at 10%. We only charge that 10% for, like, say, for instance, if you had a $300 bill in, in October, 10% of that would be $30. If that carries over into a payment plan, that initial 300 never gets penalized again. The next bill for September, for October, November, if that was $200 and you didn't pay it, that would be a 10% penalty on it. But you would then be violating your agreement that you made, because you didn't keep up with. So I, I would, I would prefer that you guys leave that at 10%. The penalty, putting the payment plans in is fine. Changing the penalty would cause software happened to be reprogrammed, and just do not have to deal with that.
Well, I would be okay with that, and for some reason, the point of the payment plans is for people who want to do the right thing, are trying, but it's tough times, and they're attempting to do that. And the, the incentive is to communicate and to get into a payment plan and, and have the time to do it. And I think this allows for that, so I would be okay with that.
You're saying 10 versus 5, or, or just clarifying, like.
Yeah.
Pat, I don't know if, sorry, trustee Paul, but I don't know if, if it would be difficult to change from 10 to 5, or 10 to 7, or, like, the, the actual calculation and the function that, that applies the late fee. I understand that if you were to change the construct of it, that it might require software change. But do you know if the 10 to 5, or it would be a software change, or is that just an edit to the formula?
Sheri told me that it's a software change.
Okay.
But she also said how much, that when we put the budget together this year, what we expected to be able to bring in over that timeframe and penalty.
Yeah, I, I appreciate both of those concerns, obviously, I know that budget is important. I think personally, you know, we probably, just like the business I operate in, sometimes you don't, you don't hit the budget, and that's okay, because there are circumstances that you didn't foresee, you know, when, when you wrote the budget. So personally, I would like to move down from 10, because I think 10 is a little excessive, given the pandemic. That's just my opinion.
What's the frequency again, if we said, are there, it's just one time, right?
Correct.
For that month.
For that month.
So we're beginning to track 10% track every month or?
Every month, if they're late.
If they're on a due date and they're technically due.
No.
Go on a, on a.
Because.
On a six-month plan, you're gonna start running down to like, one and a half, two percent APR?
A natural month.
So the rule of thing would be made, that once you're on a due date, you're no longer.
And under the, under this plan, they wouldn't go into a payment plan until March 1st?
Yeah, the, the best way to look at it, trustee Charo, in my opinion, is to think that, let's say I can't make a bill payment until March, and my bill runs up to $2,300.
And you're gonna have 10% late fees for every month until March.
Yeah, basically. So when I enter into the agreement on March 1st, you know, the COVID pandemic agreement, I'll have $2,300, which is the total past due, 10% penalty, which would be 230. And then all that would be wrapped into my payment plan, which would then be divided by 12.
And then to not get another penalty, you pay the, the next month's full bill, but.
One twelfth of.
So then you wouldn't be getting the penalty the next month, and it doesn't compound.
Right.
Yeah.
And when we passed the customer service manual, we used to charge $50 to go back out and turn people on, and we eliminated that completely.
Right.
So.
Yeah.
I asked that you legally 10% that.
So trustee Detmers, you were leaning more towards 5%? Well, yours had 3%.
Right, yes, I did suggest three in my plan, and this has, is drafted at five. So somebody would need to up that to 10 if they're interested, but I'm not interested in that.
Are you fine with the five?
I think it's, I think it's fair, yep. My, my idea was three, but to have them pay it back sooner, again, just trying to be fiscally responsible as well as, you know, compassionate.
Right.
So I think with a longer period to pay, I think 5% is, isn't significantly different than three. So I would leave it at five if I were to choose.
Okay.
I'm good with five, too. That's how I wrote it, just.
I do understand, though, that we'll have a budget shortfall based on the late fee projection, and I think we'll have to obviously make that right somehow.
I'm not okay with five, and, you know, one of the reasons being is we're creating plans to where we can break their bills down. That's the compassionate part of this. But on the other hand, there should be late charges, because we're doing that. And I believe 10% is, you know, more than compassionate in order to do that. You know, they're gonna revert back to those that do pay their bills on time and do get everything in on time, and putting it all on the backs of them, you know, to me, 5% is not, you know, it's not act, and then you're putting a hole in the budget by doing that.
I just wish we had one more minute.
We do, before us today, we have one.
We just have the one.
Uh, Greg, do we have to vote to amend just the time there from six to 12?
We'll get everything.
We're gonna have to do a significant amendment, so I'm putting the language together, and then hopefully I can clarify, once you guys come to an agreement on the percentage and, and anything else you want to address.
I was just making sure of that, there's so much going on. Thank you.
I think two at 10, two at 5, one at seven and a half, based on what you've said.
This is. I did, I did, and you know, this is effective through March 1. So I understand the budget shortfall, but, you know, a lot of people are having budget shortfalls. So I think, you know, for us to be understanding, I think, as is, with the 5% that's in the plan, like trustee Detmers has, has talked about, would be the way to go. And that's what I would support tonight.
So is there anything else?
I didn't, I didn't notice anything else in trustee Gergers.
Scorecard. Attorney, I, I've got, at this point, all we need is an amendment to correct the references to division by six in that BJ2I.
I have several more.
Okay. You, you proposed.
Based on drafting errors and some clarification language that I think is appropriate to this. So the, the first question I have is the, the way this is drafted, and I'm just gonna go top to bottom, work my way through.
Okay.
The way this is drafted, has penalties accruing at a rate of 5% during the entire calendar, during the entire 2021 calendar year. Trustee Scherzle, based on what you said, do you intend for that 5% to stop during trustee Gergers' plan, which is as of March 1, 2021, at the time, any March through December balances will occur, will revert back to that 10% rate, or do you want the 5% to be for the entire calendar year?
For right now, I'm inclined to say through March 1. Yeah. And. We'll adjust it on Dewey's. Yes, and we can adjust on Dewey's following. And I'm okay with changing it to March 1 only.
So they just have to adjust the program twice, so that it's up in March, maybe. Can you go back through, already got, considering?
That's right.
Okay.
Two, twice. Okay. The next question I have is, or the next clarification will be under BJ2, set beginning on December 1, 2020, until March 31, 2021.
Said beginning on December first, twenty twenty, until March thirty first, twenty twenty-one, that's a drafting error. That should be until March first, twenty twenty-one. Then we have the issues that Dewey raised with, with six, and that should be twelve. That's, that's the drafting error. However, it was mentioned by trustee Gerger that the intent of this is that if, if one were to enter a payment plan under your plan, the first payment, regardless of when they entered it, would be due March first, twenty twenty-one.
Correct. They would, they, payment plans wouldn't be available until March first. You're supposed to try to keep up, just like we say in, in.
The way this is written, and we need to request a payment plan prior to March first.
So I would say if they have a balance as of March first, they can, a delinquent balance, they can request that payment plan March first thereafter. And if, if somebody's delinquent on March first, when would shut offs happen, Pat? Would, would they immediately begin March first?
Well, is. March first is when we send bills out. Then they would be due on March fifteenth.
Okay.
They would get a five-day grace period, which would put them to March twentieth. And then about a week later, we would send out home calls telling them that if anybody's still owed, they would be shut off at the end of that month.
So.
And then shut offs would be the end of the month, the beginning of the next.
Do we put they have to enter into a repayment agreement between March first and March twentieth?
I, I would, it would probably be better if they did it between March first and the fifteenth.
Okay.
And that March process would be the fifth.
Right. Yep.
What were the dates where, and you could request it?
Only March first and March fifteenth.
March fifteenth.
Okay, so with those changes, the first payment will be due on April first. Or do you still want it, do you still want it to be?
April fifteenth.
Well, I'm, the way it's drafted now, the first payment after you enter a repayment plan is due. I would say it's due within seven days of entering a payment plan. I would recommend having it, well, when are, when are bills due? They're fifteenth.
Bills are due on the fifteenth, then they're usually allowed around the first.
And we make them do on the same.
Greg, that language should just say the due date of the next.
And then, so I'm gonna go back through this with you. The only other thing that I had was similar changes to B dot J dot two dot Roman numeral two. I have three, and there are three separate months for monthly installments, and it should be six. It's, it's very similar to the twelve and six error in B dot J dot two dot Roman numeral one. So with that being said, the amendment would be to, to amend section two of the ordinance to allow for five percent penalties to accrue through March first, twenty twenty-one. To provide that such payment plans are for balance, that payment plans subject to B J dot J dot two are for balances accruing between December first, twenty twenty, and March first, twenty twenty-one. That to inclu- to in, and then comma, to include the first payment of the payment plan being due at the same time as the April, as the, at the same time as March bills are due in April.
Yep.
Comma, to include subsection B dot J dot two dot Roman numeral ten to provide that payment plans must be requested between March first and March fifteenth, twenty twenty-one. Comma, and to clarify the scriminers errors related to number of months for plans in paragraphs B dot J dot two Roman numeral one and B dot J dot two Roman numeral two.
Clear as mud. Do I have a motion to make that amendment?
I make that motion.
I have a second motion by trustee Detmers, second by trustee Charo. Madam Clerk, are there any other questions? Does everybody got that memorized now? Matt, can you recite it back verbatim? Recite it back verbatim.
Oh, I may have more, can you?
Madam Clerk.
This is for the amendment. Trustee Charo. Did you say no?
I think that this should have been, we should have talked about this more.
I emailed it to you.
Yeah. So just to the, on the amended language that Greg just went.
Yes.
Yes, on the amended language.
Okay, so that's a yes. Trustee Gerger?
Yes.
Trustee Detmers?
Yes.
Trustee Churchill?
Yes.
Okay, now further discussion on the ordinance as amended. Anything additional? This would be where you said what you were. So any further discussion or comments regarding the amended ordinance? Hearing down, madam clerk, would you take the roll? I'm amended.
Yes, I will. Trustee Mao?
No.
Trustee Charo?
This is where, but we're not combining these two. We're gonna still have a one month layer, right?
We're gonna pass, we're gonna try to pass a version of his layer.
That's been tabled for further media.
Yeah, so we're just talking about.
Just the pandemic hope.
Trustee Gerger?
Yes.
Trustee Detmers?
Yes.
Trustee Churchill?
Yes.
All right. Any public comments regarding the village business?
I, I do have a question. I don't pay my bill this month on time. And I have the ten percent penalty, correct? But next month.
Yes, correct. Correct.
Next month, my late penalty would be five percent.
Correct.
Okay. So I come along next month and I don't pay it on time again, but I got the other one already paid. So my penalty is the five percent. And then the next month, I didn't make the payment, the late payment, the amount that I still owe. So that, of course, goes on my next month's bill, correct?
In a way.
Is it a separate?
It's a separate, yes, it's, there's something, a previous balance versus a current balance. Late fees are only applied to current balances, and they're not double or triple or quadruple applied to previous balances.
They don't accrue.
Okay.
And that.
So that, that month that I didn't pay all of the balance of the previous month, but I have the two hundred for what I owe for the current month.
Five percent would go on that two hundred.
But no, I'm paying that. I just can't pay the amount that I didn't pay from the previous month.
I think typically how accounting systems work is that if you have a balance of, let's say, three months of your normal charges, if you were to make a payment, you apply that payment to your oldest invoice or your oldest outstanding amount.
Are being charged a late fee on the late amount.
When? No, ma'am, that's not correct. One, one month, they will charge a late fee on the current portion. That's, that's how that system is set up and has operated.
And if you don't pay it in its entirety, you'll get a late fee on your current amount again.
But that's what I'm saying. I, I have the money to pay the current one. I just don't have the money to pay the late one.
But the way accounting systems work is that it's first in, first out.
So you really are paying a late fee on your late amount.
No, you're paying it on your current.
That's not correct. But what I would, what I would suggest on a very specific situation that you're describing here, if this does apply to you at any point in time, the ladies that work in the utility office are very adept at their job. And so for a specific question or to discuss your specific circumstances, highly recommend that you call them at such times when that would become applicable to you, and they can work you through your individual circumstances. They also are very well adept at helping people locate some of the resources that are available to provide utility assistance. And certainly we're encouraged, anybody that is facing a difficulty paying their utility bill on a current basis, to contact them to be put in contact with as many of these resources as possible. As we've seen through this entire pandemic, any program that the state is putting forward is very much limited in time and it's constrained in total financial resources. So many of these assistance programs are very much going on a first come, first served basis. So I can't emphasize strongly enough to anybody at any point in time, if you are falling behind on a payment, contact them now and reach out for those resources while they're available to you and get them. LIEHE eligibility has been expanded to two hundred percent of the poverty level for this year. And eligibility for those appointments to anybody opens December first.
And five percent begins September, September first, which means the ten percent late fee will be applied to you right now on December first.
For that bill. November bill would be still ten percent.
It's already been charged, yes. We're.
December bill would be.
Any further public comment? Schedule of meetings, Village Board is six P M on December eighth, Committee of the Whole, six fifteen, December eighth. Judiciary Oversight Subcommittee, six P M, December fourteenth.
With that, we usually do it the night before Committee of the Whole. Can we do it to the seventh? Is there?
What did you want to move?
Utility, because it's typically night before Committee of the Whole, so we can update the committee.
You want on the seventh?
Yeah, if we could.
Is that nine to the seventh?
Yeah.
All right.
Thank you.
Planning Commission, six P M on December seventeenth, Public Properties, scheduled for six P M, January eleventh, twenty twenty-one. There are no need for a closed session at night. Greg, did you have?
I was just gonna say, it's Committee of the Whole's on the seventh.
Committee of the Whole is on the eighth. He's talking about the utility sub. Here, gosh, we'll amend your schedule, too, if we need to. We can amend anything. All right, I hope everybody has a happy Thanksgiving and a very safe Thanksgiving. This year's a different Thanksgiving than most, so as you're making choices, please, in the interest of our community, our schools, our businesses that are struggling with this, choose, choose safely, choose wisely, and help us all regain some sanity as quick as we can. With that, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Trustee Charo's made a motion, seconded by.
I'll second.
Trustee Detmers, all in favor? Close, meeting stands adjourned. Happy Thanksgiving, everybody.